Hi, welcome everyone to this business meeting. Can everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Yanni for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Kloski, and thank you, everybody. It feels like a real meeting at Oyster Bay East Norwich School District. I've been waiting for this for many, many months, so I'm so happy to have all of you here. So, and also good evening to the community listening at home. The school year is coming to an end, and I am very pleased to see that our seniors had some amazing time in the last couple of days. I was bike riding early in the morning. It was about 6:15 and you guys were already here. And you took every single minute of your last few days, which I'm very pleased and I'm very proud, and I'm so happy that you had a great time the last couple of days. I want to applaud you. With the ending of the 2021 school year, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the community for giving me such a warm welcome and also the support that I received. I have enjoyed working with our students every single day, the teachers, the support staff, parents, administrators, administrators, and obviously the Board of Education. As a district, we have achieved wonderful recognition for our schools. Students and staff have been recognized throughout the year, but this outcome is the result of the supportive community and dedicated staff, and I look forward for the future. At this point, I'd like to say a few words about our retiring board member, John McAvoy. Mr. McAvoy has served the district as a board member, board president, board trustee for eight years. Throughout his tenure, John has supported our students, staff, district programs, and attended many events. Mr. McAvoy was always made sure that our students got nothing but the best. John, I cannot thank you enough on behalf of the entire community for all you have done for the students of Oyster Bay East Norwich. On a personal note, since I came to Oyster Bay, you've always been very supportive, and I've learned so much about the community from the many conversations that we had. I wish you all the best, and I just hope that you're not moving too far because we want you to be part of this community for many, many years to come. And I know that Ms. Kloski has a few words to say.
Yes, John. You've been a great, well-respected board member all these years. You've always had our students, their interests was always first in your mind. You were focused on academics. You were on our academic committee, on our safety team committee. You were a liaison to Bosse's, if I remember. You were also liaison for a lot of town issues that we would have. We really depended on you for a lot of things here. I think we're going to really miss you as a board member, and personally, I'll miss you as a friend on the board. And we really wish you the best, and you did a great job as a trustee of the Oyster Bay East Norwich School District. We want to thank you.
John, we have something for your living room, so we'd like to take a picture with the board.
I would like to say that, like everyone else, I'm looking forward to hearing about the great things our kids are going to be doing as this district moves into the top of the heap on Long Island and everywhere else. We have a very dedicated, smart, and respectful board, and we have an administration that's the best in the business. We have a wonderful community with the best kids out there, and the sky's the limit for this district, and I'm looking forward to hearing about it. Thank you.
I cannot move forward in this meeting without saying a few words about Dato Moho. She has been instrumental in moving this district forward with grace, compassion, and determination. Our quiet strength is something that I will remember for years to come. Lisa, on a personal note, I cannot thank you enough for all that you have done for our students and for the tremendous help you provided me during my transition. Oyster Bay East Norwich has been extremely fortunate to have you for the past 11 years, and I know for sure that you will be tremendously missed, and I will miss you. Best of luck. Tonight is also a special night for some of our staffs, and I know that some of you are here, Mr. DiMaggio, wave, all right, and the family, too. This is a special night because I truly enjoy this because it marks the beginning of a new chapter in the lives of our retirees, and it also recognized the passion, dedication, and commitment of our teachers. A special night like this will give the opportunity, gives us the opportunity to reflect on the work that we have done to enrich the lives of our children and to focus on the important job that we have every single day, which is shape the future. So, Ms. Karen DiMaggio, would you like to come up, please? Ms. Karen DiMaggio has been the English teacher at the high school for the past 28 years. Mr. DiMaggio dedicated each and every day addressing the needs of the children, and she did that with tremendous passion and care. Karen's EPE Language and College ISA classes were the places where she set high expectation for our students, and she prepared them for college. On behalf of the entire staff and the Board of Education, I want to congratulate on our retirement and thank God for the many years of service to Oyster Bay East Norwich High School. We wish you all the best on the next chapter of your life. Congratulations. I know this teacher couldn't be here, but I just want to say a few words and we'll mail this certificate home. I want to take this opportunity to congratulate Ms. Amy Hallack on our retirement and wish her all the best for the future. Ms. Hallack worked part-time for the science department and then became a full-time science teacher in 2009. She led the Science National Honor Society for nine years. Ms. Hallack has been praised for her well-designed lesson and the high engagement level for our students. Ms. Hallack embraced technology, and was a pioneer in launching one-to-one devices. She taught forensics and created case studies that rivaled CSI. I think it's a show. Ms. Hallack wishes you all the best, of luck on the new chapter, and wished we were here, but we're thinking of you. Last one is Mr. Rotolo. Ms. Rotolo has been a technology teacher at the high school for the past 26 years. During this time, the technology course introduced, introduced a technology course at the middle level and had students working on woodworking, design, robotics, and engineering. Ms. Rotolo was always willing to implement new ideas. Students learned practical skills and helped them to solve real-world problems. Mr. Rotolo valued critical questioning the world and shared this skill with his students. I know I may not pronouncing it the right way, but that's the Italian way to pronounce, so I guess I go with that one. Rotolo. Congratulations. At this time, we're moving forward with the student recognition, which is the best part of the night, and it gives me great pleasure to introduce, and it is my honor to introduce, our town supervisor, Joseph Saladino, who has been very supportive of our community and our students. Thank you for all that you do for our children and for helping us, empowering all our students to achieve excellence. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I'm your town supervisor, Joe Saladino, and I'm here with a part of our wonderful team in the town of Oyster Bay, including your councilwoman, who does an incredible job, Vicky Walsh. And a product of Oyster Bay's Norwich High School, our town clerk, Rich Lamarcus. It gives us great pleasure to join with you to honor incredible students who have worked so hard and have achieved such high honors. We want to thank you, Dr. Francesco Yanni, for that wonderful introduction, for allowing us to be part of it, and for all you're doing here. You and the team have done an amazing job, and I just want to say a special thank you to your principal, Sharon Lasher, assistants, superintendent, Mike Cipriani, to Maureen Rayner for all of your efforts, and to Lisa Mulhall, and a very special congratulations to you as you move on and continue to inspire. We appreciate that so much. Thank you to the athletic director, Kevin Trankowski, whose work and dedication with the students truly shows because of these incredible outcomes. And, you know, students, we have to thank those who work so hard to make a difference, to make the school district so special. You've heard a little bit about them tonight, but you may not know that your school board does an amazing job, and it's sometimes a thankless job, but a special thank you to each and every one of you, to our president, Lori Kawalski, to our vice president, Nancy Castro Giovanni, to board members, Todd Cronin, Darren Gerbosi, Mary Ann Santos, Nora Winhausen, and a special congratulations to John McAvoy for a great tenure for making an indelible mark upon this very historic and amazing district. So, thank you to all of them. Let's give them a hand, please. So well-deserved. So, we have Town of Oyster Bay citations for the following folks. I'd like you to come up with your permission so we can take a photo with them all together. Let's first start off by thanking the girls varsity softball team, winners of the 2021 Class B County Championship. And special thank you and congratulations to the inspirational coaches, Jennifer Isles and Victoria Wink. If we can ask our coaches and our team members to please come on up, we appreciate it. So, we can do this all at once, if you don't mind. I'm also, we are also going to recognize some incredible winners, and quite frankly, each and every one of you, whether you're here for a sport or a scholastic endeavor, each and every one of you is owed the highest of praise. But we want to, we have Town of Oyster Bay citations for the following, including Nick Turdungo, winner of the 2021 Boys' Cross Country Class III Championship. Nick, come on up here and join us. Also, for the winner of the 2021 Class A County Championship for the 100-meter high hurdles and the long jump, Gabby Treble, come on up, Gabby. And of course, for the winner of the 2021 Class A County Championship in the 300-meter, 3,000 meters event, Margaret Flanagan. Now going to take a photo with all of you. We really appreciate the opportunity to be here, but I also want you to recognize and thank a very special group, the people who actually own this school district and do so much sacrificing so we all can be successful, and that's our parents. Look to your parents, look them in the eyes and say, "Thank you very much, Mom and Dad, we love you." Rich, Vicky, would you like to say something? We'll take a photo.
Hi, everyone. I'm town clerk, Rich Lamarcus, and as an alumni of this school district from, does anybody care to guess what year I graduated? No, that's the year the school was built, supervisor. 1982. I want to tell you that I'm very proud of all the student athletes, the parents, the school district for your achievements. I congratulate you, and I wish you much success in the future. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Vicky Walsh, town councilwoman, but I'm also a mom here. This is very emotional for me. I got the calendar invite, and the tears were dripping down. I know all of you. And this is not a school district, this is a family, and that's not a school board. They're the family, too, so we're all in this together. Congratulations, I'm so proud of all of you, and you made it. We made it through the year.
So, can we just read the names of the players? We have Caitlin Ashheim. Congratulations.
Okay. Congratulations, Nancy Abodi.
Chiara Barefoot.
Shadé Hamilton.
Megan Cox. Megan Cox.
Olivia Cruz.
Yaslin Garcia. Congratulations.
Emma Guerra.
Marissa Ayamede.
Julia Zhao.
Hazel Maldonado.
Skylar McAvoy.
Ariana Wolfen.
And our coaches, Jennifer Isles. And Victoria Wink.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to invite to the podium Mr. Trontaski for the presentation of the varsity softball, varsity baseball, and girls track, boys track, so we're going to keep going, right? Okay.
Okay, thank you, thank you, you know, to the Board of Education, of course, to Dr. Yanni and Central Office for allowing me to speak about our spring athletes and their successes. The spring 2021 season is one that was long awaited after it was canceled in 2020. As we started the season, there were many uncertainties and guidelines in place, and thankfully, those were outnumbered by the enthusiasm and excitement, our enthusiasm and excitement our athletes and community had to get back on our fields. This season, 98 7th and 8th grade students and 217 JV and varsity athletes participated and competed. I'd like to thank the district for their support, the support staff, the Board of Education, the coaches, the families, and the students for all of their help and cooperation. We've come a long way since September in running intramural programs, and it was because everyone's commitment to stay healthy and safe. So again, thank you to all of those who participated during the spring season. The first team I do, the first group I want to call up to recognize actually just came off of the stage, but I would like to congratulate the varsity girls softball team. Once again, they were Class B County Champions in 2021. Congratulations. This team had an exciting postseason. They beat Malvern in the outer bracket, then they beat West Hemsted in the semifinal, and Wheatley came to Vernon for a game three, a deciding winner-take-all championship game, and that's where the Lady Bayman clinched the county championship. So, congratulations to the team. The team members are, and are also receiving some special awards as well. First, again, come on back up to the stage, first Skylar McAvoy, county champion, and also all-county and scholar athlete. So, congratulations, Skylar. Congratulations, Caitlin Ashheim, also all-county, an honorable mention, county champion. Olivia Cruz, all-conference county champion. Nancy Abodi, all-conference county champion. Sierra Barefoot. County champion. Shadé Chamillion. County champion. Megan Cox, county champion. Congratulations, Megan. Yaslin Garcia, county champion. Emma Guarini, county champion. Marissa Ayamede, county champion. Congratulations. Julia Zhao, county champion. Hazel Maldonado, county champion. Ariana Wolfen, county champion. The head coach of the Lady Bayman softball team, county champion 2021 team, is Coach Victoria Wink. And her assistant coach, Jennifer Isles. Congratulations. Once again, everybody, your 2021 Class B County Champions and their coaches. Congratulations. The next team to recognize is varsity boys baseball. The varsity boys baseball team qualified for the double-elimination county championship tournament. They played a couple of exciting games, but they did come a little, come up a little short. We have three award winners that we're going to recognize this evening. First off, receiving all-county honors is pitcher, Michael Gaddy. Receiving all-league recognition is Matthew Wong. And the third recipient, all-league honorable mention catcher, Colin Rainey. Congratulations, baseball. The girls track team had incredible performances all season as the team went 13-1 to finish first in the conference. Congratulations to the following athletes. First off, we heard her name earlier, Gabby Treble, 2021 Class A County Champion for the 100-high hurdles and the long jump. Also earned all-county and was also a three-time division champion. Congratulations, Gabby Treble. Greta Flanagan is the, we do, yep. Greta Flanagan, 2021 Class A County Champion for the 3,000-meter and all-county Relay Team. Congratulations, Greta. Anna Silver, all-county individual and all-county Relay Team. Congratulations, Anna. Naomi Gagliardi, also all-county Relay Team. Neal Lubin, all-county Relay Team. Gabriella Ortuño, All-County Relay Team. And Lauren Suezy, All-County Relay Team. Congratulations, girls, again, Girls' Track Team. Okay, we heard this name before as well, this is gonna be from the Boys' Track Team, another team that had great success this year and a number of individual top performances. First off, the 2021 Boys' County Champion, also All-Division and All-County, congratulations on a very strong year, Nick Tarduno. All-Division recipient this year, Vincent Arneados. Earning All-Division and All-County honors, congratulations, William Capone. Also All-Division and All-County, congratulations, Riley Kefer. All-Division Craig Menino. All-Division and All-County, congratulations Izzy Silver. All-Division Christopher Tarduno. And All-Division Alexander Zavala. Congratulations, Boys' Track. The 2021 Girls' Lacrosse Team qualified for the Class D Playoffs. While they did not advance from that round, it was a strong season with lots of successes, so we've got a few to recognize this evening. First off, receiving the Section 8 and also with Oyster Bay Scholar Athlete Award, Sophie Grady. Being recognized as All-County Honorable Mention, Grace Barrios. Being recognized with All-Conference honors, Laura Castro Giovanni. All-Conference Paulina Draven. All-Conference Kaylee O'Toole. And receiving the Unsung Hero Award, Shannon Walsh. The Boys' Lacrosse Team was the runner-up in Class D this past season. Some award winners from this team include the following. Jonathan Dinda earned All-Conference and Academic All-Conference, congratulations Jonathan. Christopher Lingan earned All-Conference and also earned Academic All-Conference, congratulations Christopher. And the third to receive both of those honors, congratulations Noah Rudnet, All-Conference and Academic All-Conference. And earning All-Conference recognition this season, congratulations Moises Maldonado. Boys' Tennis recognizes an All-Conference recipient. This person is also a six-time, six-time co-captain and an anchor for the team, so congratulations, Preston Roche.
Thank you, Mr. Trontowski. At this point, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Dr. Ryan O'Hara to the stage to present the writing contest.
I just want to thank the Board and the Superintendency for the opportunity to be here. I gotta tell you, being able to come here every day is a great joy of my life. Being able to be a member of this community every day is incredible, and this last year and a half has only reinforced that feeling in me. Watching how much it took this community to come together to make it possible for everyone to do the incredible things they've done, watching students come up here to be recognized as athletes, but to recognize they're also great writers and poets and artists and performers and researchers, because we're so small, they have to just do so many things. They're incredibly talented, and the work that we've done, the teachers, I'm learning now as a parent, because my oldest is going into high school now, just what it takes on your end to make it possible in a way that I knew, but I never really understood. So to see all of us coming together to make this possible, and then to see all of you deliver as you have, has just been incredible, and it's really my honor to recognize a few students today. Writing talent in this district runs deep. When we were remote last year, students still came together to put Agape together, our literary magazine, and we got a gold medal from Columbia Scholastic Press, all done remotely with the help of Scott Boris and Shannon Murphy, so that was incredible. We kept the paper, Harbor Voice, going all the way through and everything happening. Now, our yearbook, which is a really difficult thing to put together when the rituals of school don't happen, and that's a lot of what a yearbook is, still this year, many of you have seen it, it's incredible, we're putting it in for Columbia Scholastic Press this year because it's just incredible. So there's a lot of talent to be recognized, I'm only gonna recognize a few of our writers today that have done writing competitions, but I am super proud of the student body. Not all contests ran this year, of ones that did, we did quite well. In the Walt Whitman Poetry Contest, Ms. Murphy's ninth-period nine honors class actually got honorable mention, which was second place, for the entire class anthology of poetry, which was incredible. And we also have, I hope she can be here with us today, an honorable mention for the poetry contest as well, Gabriela Torres. Yeah. Poetry takes more than just mechanical precision, it just, it takes a real ability to look at the world and see beauty and be able to distill that, and I'm super excited that you were able to do that in this contest. We have a few more, and then we'll take a picture. And then we had a number of students who did quite well in the Martin J. Kelly Contest of the Irish Cultural Society. We have three honorable mentions from that, which means they were in the top 10% of private and public schools all across the island that put in submissions, and those are Nancy Abody, Ria Gupta, and Ciara Nasis. So this contest is open to students all across the island in grades nine through 12, and one of our ninth graders actually won first place in this contest for students nine through 12, and that's Max McComville, is he here? Max is at, if he's not here, is at math review because he has the Regents exam tomorrow, and he doesn't have to sit for it, but he is, again, shows the dedication of our students, so I'll make sure he gets that. Yep, Ciara Nasis, is Ciara here? I'll make sure she gets.
And at this point, I would like to bring to the podium Dr. Osroff to award the Long Island Science Congress. Dr. Osroff?
Good evening. Thank you to the Board of Education, thank you to our administration and community. This community has always been so supportive of science and technology and science research. So I had the pleasure to present awards to students whose intrinsic motivation to learn and discover has not faltered throughout this challenging year. So these students pursued independent research projects, many of which qualified them for AP Capstone diplomas in addition to the awards that are being presented tonight. So a special thank you to AP Seminar teacher, Ms. Nicole Schwartz, AP Research teacher, Dr. Girja Frahie, and AP Research teacher and New York State Master Teacher Stephen Aquaro for supporting these students and the work being recognized tonight. So students earned the following awards by presenting research to the Long Island Science Congress. So honorable mention goes to Lysef Award winner and our keynote student speaker at our research symposia for her project entitled "De-nitrifying Bacteria," Brianna Baugh. For her project on "How Does Garbage Waste Affect the Growth of Biofowl?" Deanna Becert. This next honorable mention goes to a student who has just been accepted to a World Renowned Partners for the Future Program at Cold Spring Harbor. He is one of 13 students throughout Long Island that was accepted to do research in this facility. His research was on the effect of therapy dogs on feelings of loneliness, Kevin Bidiani. For his research on coral bleaching reversion, William Ionetta. For his research on how socioeconomic status affects father absence, Patrick Ingerbrixton. Honorable mention for his research on genetically engineering bacteria for resistance to antibiotics, Jack Iacolano. And something we all want to know, how does location affect the accuracy of weather predictions on a 14-day forecast, Anya Kelly. Also an honorable mention at the Long Island Science Congress, "The Effect of Environmental pH on Liposomal Uptake" by Molly Kelly. There are more awards, so there were also students recognized as having a meritorious award. So for her research on influencing the inner monologue, Muskan Kumar. Body image on the visually impaired, Bianca McAvoy. Equity in Real Estate by Stephanie Sidotcha. And finally, the Honors Award for a notable project on marine microplastic bioremediation by Nathaniel Yi. So congratulations to all of our researchers, your work was truly extraordinary.
Okay, this concludes the award ceremony. If you, anybody who wants to leave now, this is like the time to leave, to go home. Thank you, everyone.
Congratulations, everybody.
Let's wait until they move out a little bit. Okay, let's open the public hearing now for the district's safety plan.
Thank you, Ms. Kowalski. I'm just gonna give an update, we had our district-wide safety committee meeting on June 15th, and I'm pleased to announce we had a district-wide camera audit. They looked at our panic buttons, our lockdown apparatus, emergency lights, et cetera. We have, they looked at every single camera. We're in the process of ordering two at Roosevelt, we already ordered one, and then the district will be fully equipped, and we are still looking to add as time goes on. Nassau County Training for Monitors at Vernon, very important. Steve Kokowski, Officer Kokowski, who's helped us so much in our school district, had taught monitors about what protocols are for when they're outside the building during a lockout, so he gave that training to the monitors, and very valuable and very good for them. The cleats and bollards were installed at Teddy Roosevelt, as you could see. And Bill Castoro, who's been a great help for our health and safety teams, he completed training on building-level safety plans and upgrades, and it was provided by New York State, so thank you for attending that, Bill. We also had the approval of the 21-22 district-wide safety plan by the committee. We had an update from Officer Kokowski from Nassau County, and also Peter Laduka, who's a Health and Safety Officer at Nassau Bosse's. So tonight, we are having the public hearing for the safety plan. Tomorrow, the plan will be posted on the district website, and it has to be posted for at least 30 days, in case the public has any questions or comments, they can contact me or email me about the safety plan. I usually keep it up, just keep it on there anyway, more than 30 days. And then in August, the Board formally approves the district-wide plan as well as the building-level private plans that are not disclosed to the public, so that happens in August. And then by October- happens in August. And then by October 1st, we submit the district-wide safety plans and the individual building-level safety plans to the state. And that's kind of the camera, that's kind of the calendar for our submission of our safety plan every year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cipriani. Any questions? Okay, I'd like to close this public hearing then on the district-wide safety plan. And then I'd like to move to thank you, Mrs. Castro-Giovanni, for pointing out that we did not reach correspondence with Ms. Santos. If you could read the correspondence?
So all these were via email. One from Demetria Marino regarding council administrators. Deanne McAvoy, thank you. Kelly Ashim, softball. Renee McAvoy, softball. Gina Weinberg, mask optional. Terrence Kelly, mask mandate. Jordana Grant, unmask our kids. Lori Kamback, mask policy. Danielle Barber, mask. Christine Yonan, mask. Garcia Salo, keep mask mandatory indoors. Sandra Glaser, subject to be discussed at next board meeting. Barbara Curry, please make mask optional in Oyster Bay. Sandra Glaser, critical race theory curriculum. Alicia Blascher, masking question. Robert Romano, 7th and 8th grade boys lacrosse game. Leslie Arnados, thank you. Gina Weinberg, mask mandates. Barbara Curry, mask policy, please make optional. Lorene de Mez, Glencoe versus Oyster Bay lacrosse games. And Mike Carbone, protect staff and students.
Thank you, Ms. Santos. And now let's move on to the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion? These are the workshop meeting of 5:421 and the business meeting of 5:2521. Do we have a motion?
Some votes.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. The business facilities report. Mr. Cipriani?
Yes, thank you very much, Ms. Kowalski. I'm going to give a very brief overview of the SIRS and the ARPA federal grants that we're so excited to be able to receive from the federal government. Just a quick overview is really the main objective of these funds is, let's see if my clicker is working. Okay. The main objective of the fund is really to maximize learning opportunities for all students, to provide a safe and healthy learning environment for all students, to maximize in-person learning, and to support all educators and all school staff. Today, I'll talk about the, slightly about the funding plan for SIRS and ARPA, the timeline. And a lot of this is going to involve some feedback from the community. So we'll post our plans on the website. And we're going to be welcoming community participation in terms of questions and questions that they may have about our plan. Federal stimulus funds are, if I can get this, I'm sorry. Maybe I'm too far away. Not going. Okay, there we go. Federal stimulus funds are one-time allocations with restricted use over multiple years. The funds are allocated to the special aid fund. So they're not, these are not funds that are part of our general fund budget or funds that are voted on by our voters. And the allocations were really calculated based on the NYSCD Title I Part A application. Come on, there we go. Okay. So the SIRS funds, $374,021. The expenses that we're going to get reimbursed for are for additional security guards, monitors, and permanent resident substitutes. The funds related to these expenditures are expected to be reimbursed next year, in the year 2122. We don't have a date, an exact date, as to when we're going to get the money, but it will be within the 2122 school year. The ARPA funds, which is the larger amount of funds, will be utilized for health and safety, such as ventilation and air conditioning projects, for enhancement of student learning, regarding like student mentoring program and the enhancement of the summer programs. And again, the same theme for these funds are to maximize in-person learning, maximize learning opportunities for all students, and to provide a healthy and safe learning environment for our students. The timeline right now is a little bit uncertain because the state still hasn't come out with a formal application yet for the ARPA funds. So we're waiting for that to happen, and then they're going to give us a deadline as to when we have to file for those funds.
So with those funds, can we use them to reimburse ourselves for expenditures we've already incurred? Or can we only use them prospectively?
The SIRS funds?
No, these ones here, the ARP?
These go forward for 2122, 2223, 2324.
Okay, so those are for future expenses?
Future, correct.
The SIRS are for past?
2021 expenses, yes.
2021. Well, what happened, was there any opportunity to get reimbursed for expenditures in this year? Okay, so for 2021 is the reimbursement?
Correct.
I got it, okay.
So this is the timeline. The allocation amounts we received in the spring of 2021. We completed the Part 1 of the ARP application in May. SIRS application is already completed. That was completed about a week ago in June. The, this is what I was talking about with the ARP application Part 2. That's the more extensive application. And that's not expected to be due until July or August, most likely August of 2021. Because as I said, they haven't come out with the application yet. We're expecting to have some draft plans posted to the website in July. And we're welcoming ongoing feedback. And, you know, as with the state, they changed their directives. So there could be some adjustments to some of these allocations. So stay tuned.
Mr. Cipriani?
Yes.
Only question. The $839,000, we can use that for the air conditioning projects? We still have two outstanding air conditioning projects we were talking about for Roosevelt and Vernon. We can use that money towards that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And we can also use it for better ventilation?
Correct.
I know during COVID, like, we increased, I guess, the, maximized the amount of airflow from outside, but there was better ventilation systems, I think, available that we should probably consider.
Absolutely. And that's definitely a use of the funds we're allowed to allocate for, absolutely. It's considered health and safety. And they specifically mentioned ventilation, air conditioning, those types of things. Yes. Sorry, my clicker is not.
Well, my vote is to focus more on the ventilation and the air conditioning?
There we go.
Rather than the programming. But that's just my opinion on it.
Am I too far away? I guess it doesn't matter. Okay. Okay, thanks. Yeah, that was the timeline. Yeah, I'm sorry, this clicker wasn't necessarily working too well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Cipriani. There were no questions from the board? Other questions? No? Okay. Now to Dr. Yanni for the 21st Century Capital Improvement, his third presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Kowalski. Some, this is, again, continuing the conversation that we started a few, about a month ago regarding improvement, improvement plans that we have and the opportunity that we have. So again, this presentation will be posted on the website. And I, we also going to create a flyer to send to community organizations. So maybe we'll have an opportunity to present at different meetings throughout the summer and in the fall to discuss some of the plans and some of, getting some feedback from the community, which is very important to us and to the Board of Education. So some important facts that we have. The critical piece that we have to consider is the fact that the cost of living, health insurance costs, contractual obligations, pensions, those are required costs, TRS, Teaching Retirement System, Employment Retirement System, Employee Retirement System, those are all costs that are increasing at a rate that we do not have any control. Some of the contractual obligation, we do have control, but in general, we have contractual obligation that's set for three, four years at a time. So that's a natural increase of cost. But when you look at the budget, one of the, one of the things that we wanted to show in this slide is to demonstrate that the budget from year to year, and this is last year's budget compared to this year's budget, the budget that we just passed, there is an increase of $1.1 million in terms of expenses. And that's really pretty much the cost that is kind of maintaining the programs that we have for our students, maintaining the facility, maintaining the equipment, maintaining everything that we have, not adding any additional cost. When you look at the, when you look at this slide, and you compare this slide to the previous one, you see that the levy, which is the amount of tax that we get from the community, is about $54 million compared to the, compared to last year, which was $53 million. So you see that the difference between the tax that we get, that we got from the community last year, and the tax that we're getting from the community this year, the difference is about $749.00. That's based on the levy. That's based on the maximum allowable tax levy, the maximum amount that we can get from the community. So you see that there is a $749,000 that we can get from the community. But the budget, without adding anything, increased to 1.1. So you see that there is roughly a difference of $400,000 that we have to fill that gap by being creative. And so we do that by using our reserves, using our state aid, using other revenues to the budget. But the reason, the reason I'm showing this slide is to show to the community that if we don't do anything to the budget, if we don't add any program, we continue to maintain the programs that we have in place, we still have a natural increase. And that natural increase, which is the, in this case, natural increase, we get a difference of $1.1 million, is pretty much based on some amount of levy that we can get. So the amount of levy that we can get is 54, the budget is 61. So we come up with that difference. And so how do we get to that tax levy? And this is a slide that we posted on the website during the budget process, where we showed the community how the tax levy, the amount of tax that we can get from the community is calculated. That's a simple, very simple eight-step formula calculation that is given us by the state. And what you see at this point is that calculating everything for us, the calculation gave us the amount of tax levy, the allowable tax levy of 1.4%. So you see that part of that 1.4% was the debt service that we have. So that's part of the calculation. And that's the reason, that's the reason why I'm showing this slide to the community, to demonstrate that part of that 1.4% is also analyzing the debt service that you have every year. And that's one important fact. The second important fact is that the first number in that calculation is the levy, the allowable tax levy that you were, that you were getting from the community the previous year. So if the levy this year is set at $54 million, next year, that would be the first number in the calculation. So if the levy is lower because of debt service coming off or because of any other reason, your base number, your first number in the calculation the following year is going to be lower. Okay? So what we have done in the past, we have done a lot of work in this community. The board has done a lot of work. The community supported a lot of work. Some of them, you know, obviously, you see it every time you pass by the high school. You see the new addition to the music wing, the gymnasium at the entire entrance that was created. And that's the bond that is coming off that was issued to support that kind of a project. So we have done a lot of work with that. And obviously, there is a lot more to do. So looking at the future, what are some of the values, what are some of the variables that we know, some of the facts that we know? Well, one of the things that we know for sure is that there is some debt service that is coming off. It's almost like when you have a mortgage on the house or you're leasing a car. You know the time. We know the time when that mortgage or that lease is coming to an end. And so the question is, do we put another lease right at the end of it? Or do we put another mortgage right at the end of it? Or we just let it go? The other thing is, we have a building condition survey. There is almost a checkup of the building that is done every five years and needs to be submitted to the state. Architects, engineers, they go around, our entire staff go around and look at everything, make sure that the bathroom are up to code, doors are up to code, windows, walls, tiles, ceiling, everything, pipes, heaters, everything, controls are all in place. That is a complete list that is submitted to the state that we have to fix independently of we doing a capital project or not. So it's almost like a list that comes out and say, you have your boiler that is not in proper order, you have to fix it. You have piping that needs to be insulated that is not in order, not up to code, and you have to change it by law. Facility needs to, the facility needs make our school ready for the 21st century. Kids, the way they're learning today is different than the way they were learning 10 years ago, 15 years ago. Service that we have to mandate to students is different than it used to be 10, 15 years ago. So we have to follow those mandates. And they are given to us by the State Aid Department that we have to follow. So you have to address certain students. You have to provide service to certain students in certain locations. And has to be done in that way. You cannot change it. So those are all factors that we know for a fact. The other thing that we know right now, which is good for us, thinking about a project, is that interest rates are currently low. And I'm not sure how long that interest, those interest rates are going to stay at the same level. Now, what we don't know is the budget variables are changing. So CPI, which is part of the calculation for the tax levy, TRS, ERS, health insurance costs, those are changing. The construction cost, they could potentially change. Five years from now, if we have to do capital work, that same work that we're going to do in five years could cost, could have a different number than, the cost could be different than it is today. So definite, the construction cost could potentially increase. When you look at the debt service analysis, we have shown this in the past, you see that the, I, I call it the magic school year is 23, 24, because that's the year, when you look at the last line, last row, you see that the debt service is going from 2.2 million dollars to 522. So, it's almost like you're leasing a car, you think about a very expensive car, you're leasing, you're leasing, you're leasing, that lease comes to an end. Now, if you bring this in simple terms, when you're leasing a car and you think about a home, it's a very simple question, you get another car, or you walk, or drive, or, or ride the bike to work. But when you look at the school system, it's different, because that difference between 2.2 million dollars and 522, that very last line, that creates a major impact on your levy calculation, on the tax that you get from the community. So, if you do not have a debt service, if you don't have another mortgage, if you don't have another lease, your tax levy are going to go to a negative number, you will see in a second. So, you will see that there is a drop of 1,700 and, and change. And so, that is a number that we know for a fact, because we know when that lease is going to come. And that, that bond was issued when the gymnasium and the renovation of the library was done many years ago, I believe 15 years ago. So, this slide is also, I believe, a very important slide, because it gives you an indication of, obviously, the fluctuation, but also the decline in terms of the interest rates. And right now, they're at the lowest point. When I created this presentation, that was from, from a financial advisor, that was the very last rate that we have, 1.2. So, you see the decline, there are some peaks, but overall, there's been a, a steady decline. So, why, why thinking about another bond right now? And, you know, I was talking to some, some of our board members that have tremendous experience in, in the area, and, you know, it's, it's, it's about being responsible. And so, we have to be responsible, what we call it fiscally responsible, is not just managing your operating budget, it's not just how do you spend your money, being conservative, doing the right thing, and, and make sure that you have the right program for the kids, but it's also managing your reserves, managing, just like you do at home, right? You, you watch where you spend, you also make sure that you have enough money in, in the saving account, so if the roof goes down, you can, you can call somebody and get that roof fixed right away. But the other thing that you do, you're also managing your debt. And, and you see that you have a budget, and you look at the budget, and you're trying to create, any, any financial advisor would tell you that to create, to, to create, to avoid fluctuation in your budget is definitely a plus. And the other thing that you want to do to be fiscally responsible, you have to plan for the future. So, if you know, for example, that a boiler is about to go down in three years, you're not going to wait to the third year, when in the middle of the winter, the boiler goes down, and then you've got to call a contractor that is going to charge you for the boiler and for the service to come in at the last minute. It's the same exact concept. So, some important facts that we have to keep in mind, because at the end of the day, people can ask, oh, look, I, I'm not too interested in the levy calculation, this and that, I'm, I'm interested in knowing what are the sum of the critical facts. And I think that those four bullets will tell it all. The district is making the final payments on a, on the 2013, 2015 refunding bonds. It was bonds that were issued, then they were refinanced because of the interest rate, right? And that, 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 that work that was done was approximately 10 million dollars, right? The payment for those, for those bonds that were, for, for the bonds that were issued is about 1.7 million dollar per year. So, if you translate this into very simple, in simple terms, you're pretty much doing a final payment on a car that is, you know, worth it, you know, pictured, 10 million dollar car, it's a very expensive car, and you make a payment every year of 1.7 million. So, that's coming to an end. We know that for a fact, that's reality. Now, the capital improvement project for the district that we're proposing is about, is approximately 30 million dollars. And the payment for this estimated project is expected to be the same that we have right now. So, in other words, if I have a 10 million dollar car, right, I'm getting a 30 million dollar car for the same payment. And that's why we're saying in multiple presentation, and no, no additional cost, because it's the same payment that you have, being consistent. One of the, one of the, you know, some people could say, well, where is the trick over here? You, you get 10 million for same price, you get 20 more million for the same price, is obviously because of the interest rates right now, that is, that is low, and the fact that it was refinanced multiple times. So, when you look at the, if you look this in a simple bar graph, the blue bars represent the one that, the payments that we're doing right now, right? The red bars are the one that we are proposing to implement, to, the, the bond that we, we proposing to issue, so then we can maintain some sort of stability in the, in the debt service, in the debt payment, in the, in the payment that, that we have. And so, the, the proposed project, projects, they're not only taking into account the fact that in 23, 24, the, the, the bond, the, the debt service goes from 2.2 to 522. It also takes into account the fact that in 26, 27, even that 522 is coming off. So, this project, the, the, these projects, what they will do, will take into account multiple drops of the debt service, and creating that kind of stability that is, that is fiscally sound for, for the district. And so, I go back to the same, to the same point of helping the community understand that when you look at debt service, debt service, the payment of a mortgage, of a lease, of, is critical in the calculation of the levy, that's a main component. And, and in this case is, you know, beneficial to us, because the interest rate are very, are very low. So, what would be the timeline? The one thing that is critical here is that there is a December vote. If the community is supporting this, it must be a December vote. If we decide to vote somewhere else in April, May, or some other time, you are not going to have enough time to submit the project to the state and get the approval, get the work started, and get bands, which is bond anticipated notes, or bonds, on time to be on, in the books for the 23, 24 debt that is coming off. So, the timing is essential over here, okay? So, here we, is a slide that we had last time, so looking at the December vote, and then you have the work starting in the summer of 2022, which is next year. So, the scope of work, I'm going to go quickly through this, you will see all the pictures we put in multiple presentations, so I'm going to briefly go through that. But I want to point out that in red are items that are coming from the building condition survey, that's the checkup that I told you about before. Those are items that will need to be done, no matter what. If you have the project or not, they need to be done, because we need to make sure that the, 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 the buildings are up to, they're in compliance with code and regulation. So, high school, we talked about the second floor, renovation of the back of the library, and again, this is just preliminary. Once the board decide, and, and the community is in support of it, then at that point, once there is a vote done, then we go full force in the designing and taking, you know, looking at all details. And that's coming also, that point, we will have renderings of how the work is going to, going to look, just like we had done in the past. So, this is the library, this is the second floor, turf field, and the back of the high school over here, and the field is going to be used for multiple sports. Vernon, same thing, in red must be done, part of the building condition survey, and here we have multiple areas. You have entire music and, music and classroom renovations, renovation of the Butler Building, which will be extended and completely renovated inside. You have also a storage facility towards the turf field, and you have the extension of the cafeteria, which is original. Roosevelt will have an extension of the building, will be a two-story building that is attached at the end, and that's the first floor and the second floor on the right. The timeline of work, I think this is important, summer '22, the turf must be done first, and the reason is because the turf, in terms of designing, in terms of submission to the state and approval, has got the quickest turnaround, because it doesn't have plumbing, electrical, mechanical, so that is a, a faster rate of approval. When you look at the summer of '23, and then you have the majority of the project that will go into the fall, and then you have summer '22, '24, 2024 will be a completion of all the work. One of the good questions that I received from, from a community member was, for example, extension of, of the building, how invasive that would be, and how can they do the work during the summer? So, during the summer, when students are not around, the bulk of the work is done, completely outside, completely done. Then, when the work, when the school starts, they're going to do work inside. And if there is any noise, if there is any trucks that have to come by, or anything like that, that's done after school, after hours. And that's all taken into, into account, into the, obviously, the, the, the cost of the, all the projects. Again, the timeline, we have, we have done three presentations, we all, we'll, we created a flyer, we'll submit, we'll send it to community members. I, anybody listening, anybody that would like for, for me or my team, or members of the board to present and explain, it would be our pleasure. Our next meeting that we're going to talk about this, I know the summer is usually people go on vacation, so we wanted to be really open and, and clear and transparent about our thinking, and so, that's why we have been doing all these presentations when school is in session, in the summertime, July, people go on vacation, but the next one will be in August. And in the meantime, I'm open to any invitation, anybody, at any point, anytime, I'd be more than happy to go over there. And that's the timeline that we follow, we created a website, tab on our website, and we're posting everything, but feel free to call my office, email me personally, and I will be more than happy to go over anything. I don't know at this point if the board has any question for, for me or for us.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. Yanni. Now, this moves us on into next portion of our meeting, which is personnel actions. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District hereby approves the following professional personnel and civil service personnel resolutions as listed. And that goes on to page three. Do I, do I have a motion?
All.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to business actions. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District hereby approves the following business resolutions as listed. Do I have a motion?
No.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Special services. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District hereby approves the following special services resolutions as listed. Do I have a motion?
No.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. New business. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District hereby approves the following new business resolutions as listed. And that goes to page seven. Do I have a motion?
No.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have one question.
Sure, Mr. Cronin.
Hey, contract for the, is that the actual one we discussed, or is that a renewed contract?
Mr. Cronin, that's the additional trainer that we have, that we're going to have, we're going to have two trainers. Yeah?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now, I guess we go on to Friday packet. Any questions on the Friday packet? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting and go into exec? So moved? Second? Thank you, everyone, thank you, everyone, for, for attending tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.